Welcome, everyone. Today is a historic, very historic day for Austin Peay State University, and I'm delighted to welcome you all here. It's also a special delight to have the governor of Tennessee, Governor Bill Haslam, who offered the Focus Act as a way for institutions to have more direct support and oversight through an institutional board. And our governor will address you in just a few minutes. I'm also very happy to have the support of a strong legislative contingent, very happy to have Speaker Pro Tem Curtis Johnson with us. And just a few minutes ago, we had Senator Mark Green, Representative Jay Reidy, and Representative Joe Pitts will be here in a few minutes. So they're taking on the work of the state. I also appreciate the leadership of Mike Kraus, Executive Director of the Tennessee Higher Education Commission, and his team, along with Carol Cartwright from the Association of Governing Boards, for their work in providing training for our new board members and our leadership team. And just as a special note, we're very proud of Mr. Kraus, who is an Austin Peay alum, as is Speaker Pro Tem Curtis Johnson, and Representative Joe Pitts, and Representative Jay Reidy.
I'm starting to feel left out here.
Not everyone is that lucky, sir. So I also appreciate the members of APSU's Transition Task Force, who've really worked hard, along with our staff, to lead the efforts to plan this meeting. So Governor Haslam, thank you so much for making education a priority. Please address our crowd.
Well, thank you, and thanks for joining us. And Dr. White, you're right, this is a historic day. When we first started dreaming about the Focus Act, I don't know that I specifically had one school in mind, but driving in here, it occurred to me that Austin Peay probably is as good of example as any other school, and maybe better. When you think about the unique opportunities of this school, having kind of economic growth that's happening in this region right now, having the relationship that you have to Fort Campbell, it needs to have its own unique board that focuses on the unique opportunities for this school. And that's why I was thrilled that such a, I'm a little biased, but what I think is a stellar group of men and women agreed to serve. You should know in this process that these are all people who I went out and recruited to serve. They weren't lining up at my door begging to do it because they thought there was some, they'd get maybe a special parking place at the football game or something. But these were people who were committed to the university, who really wanted what was best, and I was thrilled when they said yes to doing this. Those of you who may not know, prior to this, we had the Tennessee Board of Regents, which formed a great service, but it had all of our, it had six four-year schools, six four-year universities, like Austin Peay. We had our community colleges and all of our technical schools, all in one group. And I thought it was impossible for the board to focus on the strengths of each school to help optimize that school, if you will, like this board will. So I'm really grateful that you all would do this. I want to echo your thanks to our legislative leadership. Speaker Pro Tem Curtis Johnson was critical for us in helping get this passed, as well as Senator Green, Representative Reidy, and Representative Pitts, all because they get Austin Peay and they understand how important it is to this area. Once I started telling the story, I think when I spoke to Curtis, in about six seconds, he said, "I get it, I get it, I'm on your side." So that helps a lot when you have leaders like Curtis and others who joined in. So thank you. One, I guess, two quick words to this board, and then I'll turn it back over to Dr. White. First of all, thank you. I do think this is important, not just for this school, but for the entire region and for the state. The better this school becomes, the bigger difference it will make for this entire region. I'm 100% convinced. I don't think you'll find anybody that believes in the power of higher education, probably, I shouldn't, that's too strong, but you'll find few people who believe in the power of higher education as much as I do, in its ability to transform not just individuals, but an entire state. And Austin Peay has the capacity to do that, and is already doing that to a large extent. So first of all, thank you for doing this. It's, I know you're all busy people, but I think this will prove worth your while. The second thing is this, while we're thrilled to have an individual board focusing on Austin Peay, I would also gently remind you that you're still part of the state's higher education network. And we have a system of colleges and schools around the state, and there will be times when there'll be something that you might want to do that you don't understand why it's not the state's exact priority, whether it be a new building or a new program. And the role of Tennessee Higher Education Commission and Mike Kraus will be a critical player in that. They understand the school and work, but they also are responsible for representing the state's needs as we look at opportunities. So with that, thank you. I'm, like I said, I'm just excited to be here, to be a part of history, and I want to thank, last thing I'll say this, is Dr. White will now work for you all, and I think that's a good thing. But I will say this, in this process, Dr. White was incredibly helpful. When you start messing with something as governor and you're not a professional educator, you want to talk to people who are to make certain you're making the right decisions. And Dr. White, with her background and her insight, was incredibly helpful as we walked through the process of, here's the idea, how do we make it a reality? And Dr. White was incredibly helpful. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Governor. Thank you so much. So as we begin this board meeting, I would like for you to begin thinking about your work in context of Austin Peay's place in that portfolio of institutions available in Tennessee, because we all occupy a special niche, even though our purpose is the same thing. So our state is known nationally as being innovative, focused on student success, and being relentlessly intentional about increasing the degrees and credentials of Tennessee residents. I serve on a couple of national boards and committees, and I'm often asked if the buzz about Tennessee is really true, because we are in the media. We're in the national media, and people are watching us because we are leading the charge for degree completion. And I tell them it is true. And I truly have calls on a regular basis from people around the country who are looking for jobs in Tennessee because of that focus on higher education. So Tennessee's higher education policies have been very positive for Austin Peay. Although our total operating budget is the lowest among the six locally governed universities, we actually have enjoyed the highest percentage of increases in the state funding formula for several years, specifically because of our performance on outcomes that the state has identified is really important to providing an educational opportunity to all Tennesseans. In addition, we operate extremely efficiently. Our ratio of administrators and professional staff to students is the lowest of the six former TBR institutions, which means we have fewer people who are able to support our students than do the work of the university. They actually get it done, but we do more with less. Our ratio of faculty to students is also the lowest, and we hold the status as the second most efficiently-staffed university among former TBR institutions, with only one having slightly fewer clerical, technical, and support staff members per student. Last year, excuse me, last month, the Nashville Business Journal named Austin Peay State University as best in business in the nonprofit category, largely due to our reputation for quality, productivity, and efficiencies. So that's important, because we understand our role as those who are responsible to the taxpayers for what they're investing in higher education, and we understand our role to the students who are trying to afford a quality education. So while many universities in the state are struggling with flat or declining enrollments greatly due to the changing demographic in the state, there are fewer high school seniors graduating, and that's really affected a lot of universities. But Austin Peay enrolled its largest freshman class ever last fall, and we're on target to enroll another record freshman class this year. We work collaboratively with Tennessee community colleges to make sure their graduates can seamlessly transfer, and we're working with veterans and other adult students to help them find pathways to degree completion. And our mix of students makes us especially vibrant and relevant, and frankly, that's the kind of institution that we want to stay. Even so, 2,000 students live in our residence halls. So our mission is to provide access to students who may need a special hand, but we also spend a lot of energy and effort and resources to help them succeed. And frankly, I'm very proud of what our university community has done, and it happened long before I got here. I just was able to join a wonderful community of people who really get the mission. We also work hard to keep our costs down. Our tuition and mandatory fees are the second lowest among all Tennessee public institutions, and we're a university that offers an excellent education at an affordable cost. The last two years have been the second and third highest in the university's history in terms of fundraising, and we're expecting to exceed those levels this year. So I'm really proud of our staff and faculty for telling the Austin Peay story to our friends and alumni who want to support us. So I just wanted you to know that I've been talking about you all over the state, how great our board members are, how much you care about Austin Peay, what expertise you bring to our institution. But I also wanted you to know what a wonderful institution this is to serve, and how dedicated we are to helping our students and our community, and I'm really happy that we can do this work together. So today's meeting focuses on establishing appropriate governance, but I look forward to sharing more about the university in future meetings. So at this time, we need to call the roll. As we call the roll, trustees, please state your name, and then tell us that you're present.
Trustee Atkins.
Trustee Atkins.
Trustee Canada.
Catherine Canada.
Trustee Carol.
Whatever, Carol.
Trustee Jenkins.
Don Jenkins.
Trustee Luck.
Harry Luck.
Trustee May.
Lawrence O'May.
Trustee Miller.
Robin Miller.
Trustee O'Malley.
Michael O'Malley.
Trustee Rayburn.
No, Rayburn.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. In a few minutes, you'll elect a chair, and at that time, I'll pass the gavel. But in the meantime, upon the authority that the governor gave to me, I'm going to handle the meeting. So I move for the adoption of the agenda. Is there a second? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The agenda is adopted. So you have before you a copy of the bylaws that were drafted by the Austin Peay State University Office of Legal Affairs. They follow best practices as outlined by the Association for Governing Boards, and you've had a chance to review those. So your bylaws are arranged by articles. Article one pertains to governance. Article two, to the purpose of the bylaws, is outlined by state code. Article three, to the powers and duties of the board and board operation. Four pertains to board meetings. Five pertains to board officers. Six, to university officers. Article seven pertains to board committees. Eight pertains to conflicts of interest, and article nine pertains to severability. I will entertain a motion to handle the bylaws in their entirety as opposed to article by article. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Is there any discussion on the motion to handle them altogether? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now I will entertain a motion to adopt the bylaws as written. Any motion? A second? Thank you. It is moved and seconded that the bylaws be adopted as written. Is there any discussion? Is there any, well, hearing none. The question is on the motion that you adopt the bylaws as written. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins. Trustee Canada. Trustee Carol. Trustee Jenkins. Trustee Luck. Trustee May. Trustee Miller. Trustee O'Malley. Trustee Rayburn. Nine yeses.
Motion carries. At this time, I would like to open the floor for nominations for board chair. Is there a nomination? There's a nomination for Mike O'Malley. Is there a second? Okay, it is moved and seconded that Mike O'Malley serve as the inaugural board chair of the APSU Board of Trustees. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion that Mike O'Malley serve as the board chair. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins. Trustee Canada. Trustee Carol. Trustee Jenkins. Trustee Luck. Trustee May. Trustee Miller. Trustee O'Malley.
I'll pass.
Trustee Rayburn. Eight yeses.
Thank you. We now have a board chair, and I'm going to ask this board chair to sit to the left of the governor and join us. He didn't know.
I thought she'd sit in the middle.
All right, that'll work. I am gleefully going to pass this over.
I feel like a high chair.
Short ass.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your agreeing to serve.
Thank you very much.
And so we'll put you right here. And we are on page, right here.
Thank you very much to the board. I'm honored and humbled, and I'll do my best to do a good job leading this great new board. So I guess my first official duty is to open the floor for nominations to vice chair.
It'd be my pleasure to nominate Catherine to as vice chair.
Do I hear a second? So Catherine's been nominated to serve as vice chair. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins. Trustee Canada. Trustee Carol. Trustee Jenkins. Trustee Luck. Trustee May. Trustee Miller. Trustee O'Malley. Trustee Rayburn. Nine yeses.
Congratulations, Catherine. Welcome to the front of the table. The university's accrediting body, the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges, requires the Board of Trustees to appoint the chief executive officer of the institution. To have that appointment on record, I move to ratify Dr. Lisa White as president of Austin Peay State University. And I guess I need a second on that. It is moved and seconded that Dr. Lisa White be ratified as president of Austin Peay State University. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, question on ratification of Dr. Lisa White as president of Austin Peay State University. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins. Trustee Canada. Trustee Carol. Trustee Jenkins. Trustee Luck. Trustee May. Trustee Miller. Trustee O'Malley. Trustee Rayburn. Nine yeses.
So the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. I was waiting for that.
You're not going anywhere. Chair recognizes President White, who will discuss secretary appointment.
So per the bylaws that you adopted just a few minutes ago, the secretary to the board is appointed by the president, and I have appointed Danell Whiteside, general counsel, to serve in this capacity. Ms. Whiteside came to Austin Peay early January after serving as an attorney for the U.S. Department of Education, Office of Civil Rights. Prior to that, she served as an attorney for the Tennessee State Board of Education, and served as that body's secretary to the board. I can't imagine anyone whose experience would be more relevant to serve in this capacity, and she's already proven herself to be a great asset to the university. So that's why she's appointed.
Outstanding. So per the bylaws, you've said that already, so thank you.
Okay.
And I recognize you again, President White, for talking to us about the selection of the student member of the board.
So our university is really different, as I alluded to in my opening remarks. Forty percent of our students are non-traditional. One in five, actually it's creeping to one to four, is military-connected in some way, either active-duty, veteran, or dependent. We have a number of transfer students, and so we wanted to cast a wide net for potential students to serve in the capacity of student trustees. We put out a widely distributed notice and invited students to apply, and then we appointed a board of review that included three students and two administrators, actually administrative staff, who reviewed the applications. We also invited faculty and staff to reach out specifically to students they thought would make good trustees and invite them to apply. That board of review took those applications and narrowed them to three, and we invited those three to send an application and a video that was put together by our marketing team. They prepared videos that you have already seen before today. So I just wanted you to understand that we cast as wide a net as possible. I'm very comfortable with the three who have been recommended to you today, and I'm happy to say that all three are qualified.
So do we have a motion to nominate one of the students?
Well, I'll shortly make that motion.
Are they in the room now?
No.
Okay.
That's what I heard. What do you want to do with that name?
I think so, yes.
I'd nominate Crystal.
So we have a motion to nominate Crystal. Is there a second? Is there any further discussion? Any other nominations? Okay, it's moved and seconded that Crystal be selected as the student trustee. Hearing none, hearing no further discussion, question on selecting Crystal as a student trustee, secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins. Trustee Canada. Trustee Carol. Trustee Jenkins. Trustee Luck. Trustee May. Trustee Miller. Trustee O'Malley. Trustee Rayburn. Nine yeses.
Carol, would you bring Crystal in, please?
So you might explain that all three are in the back. Would you like me to?
So just for the other board members, all three students were waiting in the back until this vote was taken, and so now Carol Clark has gone to choose, or to bring in the student that you selected, so that she can take her place at the table.
We'll congratulate her when she comes in.
Crystal, on behalf of the board, congratulations. Take your seat, and great job. President White has discussed committee options with all of the board members other than Crystal, who was just selected, and she recommends that the board have the following committees. The first committee being audit, business and finance, and academic programs, and policies, student affairs. Yeah, let me say that again. The first one is audit, the second is business and finance, the third being academic programs and policies and student affairs. Thanks for cleaning me up. Keep in mind that we have the ability to add standing and ad hoc committees as needed in the future. Do I have a motion on Dr. White's recommendation for the committee structures? Okay, so it's moved and seconded that the board create an audit committee, a business and finance committee, and an academic programs and policies, student affairs committee. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the question on the motion that the board create an audit committee, a business and finance committee, and an academic programs and policies, student affairs committee. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins. Trustee Canada. Trustee Carol. Trustee Jenkins. Trustee Luck. Trustee May. Trustee Miller. Trustee O'Malley. Trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee Rayburn. Nine yeses.
So motion carries. Thank you. I now move to ratify the charter of the audit committee. Can I have a second? It is moved and seconded that the charter of the audit committee be ratified. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the question on the charter for the audit committee, and secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins. Trustee Canada. Trustee Carol. Trustee Jenkins. Trustee Luck. Trustee May. Trustee Miller. Trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee Rayburn. Nine yeses.
Thank you. The charter for the audit committee is ratified. At this time, we need to make appointments for individuals to serve on the three committees. Again, we have the following committees, first being audit, second is business and finance, the third being academic and student affairs. I'd like to appoint the following individuals to the audit committee. Trustee Atkins, trustee Rayburn, and trustee Canada, with trustee Canada being the chair. Will you serve, the three of you? Thank you. I'd like to appoint the following individuals to the business and finance committee. Trustee Jenkins, trustee Carol, trustee Canada, trustee Atkins, and trustee Luck, with trustee Atkins being the chair of that committee. Will you serve? Thank you. And I'd like to finally appoint the following individuals to the academic and student affairs committee. Trustee Miller, trustee May, trustee Rayburn, trustee Jenkins, trustee Luck, and our new student trustee, and with Don Jenkins being the chair. Will you serve? Very good. Thank you very much. Mr. Clements came to Austin Peay nearly a year ago after serving as an auditor for the Tennessee Board of Regents. He's been a terrific addition to the university community. I move to confirm Blaine Clements as the director of internal audit. Can I have a second? Thank you. It's moved and seconded that Blaine Clements be the director of internal audit. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion that Blaine Clements be the director of internal audit. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins. Trustee Canada. Trustee Carol. Trustee Jenkins. Trustee Luck. Trustee May. Trustee Miller. Trustee O'Malley. Trustee Rayburn. Nine yeses.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Danell Whiteside, who will discuss conflict of interest policy and the code of ethics.
The Focus Act requires the Board of Trustees to adopt a code of ethics that will apply to and govern the conduct of all appointed members of this board. The Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges requires the board to adopt a policy which addresses conflicts of interest for its members, and procedures also where the members can be dismissed for appropriate reasons by a fair process. And you were provided these policies in your materials, and I will entertain any questions that you have. Sounds like we don't have any.
Okay, so I move that we adopt the conflict of interest policy and the code of ethics as written. Do I hear a second? Thank you. It's moved and seconded that we adopt the conflict of interest policy and the code of ethics as written. Is any additional discussion? Hearing none, the question on the motion is, hearing none, the question is on the motion. So secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins. Trustee Canada. Trustee Carol. Trustee Jenkins. Trustee Luck. Trustee May. Trustee Miller. Trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee Rayburn. Nine yeses.
Thank you. The conflict of interest policy and the code of ethics are approved. The chair recognizes President White, who will discuss policy approval and process undergone as a result of the Focus Act.
After the Focus Act was passed in the summer, I put together a transition task force. The governor had one at the state level, actually, and we put a local task force together that was chaired by Carol Clark, executive director. Actually, she's the special assistant now to the president for government and business relations. And she and her team really have done a lot of work over the last few months, and the majority of that work has centered on university policy. I charged them with identifying which of the policies were required by state or federal statute or regulation, which were required by the Southern Association Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges, and which were required by TBR, the Tennessee Board of Regents system, those policies that might not be required other than what was the wishes and will of TBR. And so the Focus Act stipulates that our current policies, that really are TBR policies, remain in effect until you approve new policies and you replace them. And so by voting on the policies as presented to you, you will in effect be rescinding TBR policies at the same time. So the policies are organized into two categories. Governance and operations, which are denoted by a policy number with a 1, starting with a 1, and then all the other policies. So specifically, you're being asked to vote on the operation, or excuse me, the governance and operations policies, which also include a policy administration policy, delegating other policy approvals to the president. I'm trying to figure out how many times I can say "policy" in one paragraph. And all of those policies go through a rigorous approval process before they're given to the president for review.
So I move that we adopt the policies as written. Do I have a second?
Second.
It is moved and seconded that we adopt the governance and operations policies as presented. Are there any questions or any discussion? Hearing none, the question on the motion to adopt the governance and operations policies as presented. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins.
Yes.
Trustee Canata.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Luck.
Yes.
Trustee May.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee Rayburn.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Mitch Robinson, vice president for finance and administration, to present information regarding housing rates for the 2017-18 academic year.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, each of you, each trustee member. Each spring fee proposals are considered by the governing board for approval. But as you know, this is not a typical year. Most fee increases will actually occur at our next board meeting. However, there is one proposal I am bringing forward for your consideration, which is an increase to the APSU housing rates for fall 2017. The reason I am bringing this request forward now is so that our university housing office can let not only our new students but also returning students know what the rates will be for fall. The proposed fee increase has an average of 3% and will be used to cover housing inflationary costs and also debt repayments for housing improvements. Please refer to the next slide on the display, and it will show you the housing rates that we have had over the past four years. And as you can see, the increase have varied each year. Last year, the average increase was 4%, and what is being proposed for this year is 3%. The board mail-out also details the different rates proposed for double and single occupancy, family apartments, and individual student apartments. Austin Peay housing rates are competitive with off-campus rental rates, and demand for on-housing campus is actually very, very strong. The university staff have reviewed and concur with the proposed 3% fee increase. Your consideration and approval is recommended. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch. It is moved, or I move that we set the housing rates at the numbers that Mitch has prescribed for the 2017-18 academic year. Do I have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, the question on setting the housing rates for the 17-18 academic year passes. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins.
Yes.
Trustee Canata.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Luck.
Yes.
Trustee May.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee Rayburn.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Thank you. The motion carries. Chair recognizes Dr. Rex Gandy, provost and vice president for academic affairs, to present information regarding a new degree program in engineering physics.
Good afternoon. Before I present the proposed engineering physics program to you, I would just like to provide a brief overview of the board's role with academic program approval. The Board of Trustees will be notified of APSU's intent to develop a new degree program. For example, in your board notebook today, you have an information item related to our intent to develop our first doctoral program, the Doctorate of Education in Educational Leadership. After today's meeting, APSU submits a letter of notification to the Tennessee Higher Education Commission, THEC, to seek THEC staff support for the further development of that doctoral program. Accompanying the THEC paperwork, Austin Peay indicates that the Board of Trustees is aware of the development of a proposal for a new academic program. We are not yet asking for your approval of that EDD program. There are additional steps that will occur on campus and at THEC prior to asking you to formally approve the program's implementation. To summarize, first, the board will be informed of the development of any new program proposals, and then later ask for approval to implement the proposed new program. We have provided web links in your books with more information about these steps. However, at this point, I could answer any questions you might have about that. It's basically like going to the movies. You get a preview, and then you see the movie. Any questions? Okay, now I would like to present the proposal for establishing a new undergraduate major, a Bachelor of Science in Engineering in Engineering Physics. Austin Peay is seeking your approval for this proposed program. The program has already received internal approval at Austin Peay State University, and the program has also been reviewed by THEC staff and a qualified external reviewer. If you approve this program, then it will proceed to the next appropriate THEC quarterly meeting for final approval. The university proposes to implement this new bachelor's degree in fall of 2017. The program will be housed in the Department of Physics and Astronomy within the College of Science and Mathematics. We estimate an initial enrollment of 15 students, then growing to 28 students in fall 2018, and 45 to 50 students in fall 2019. This program, it's important to note that no other public institution in the state of Tennessee currently offers a degree in engineering physics. After launching the program, we will seek program accreditation through the American Board of Engineering and Technology. Engineering physics is an interdisciplinary study of physics, mathematics, and engineering. The field emphasizes the development of advanced techniques to solve complex real-world problems in engineering, design, and manufacturing. The program focuses on advanced topics that are outside the scope of traditional engineering subject areas and requires advanced physics and design curriculum, more so than a typical engineering degree. We are confident of the role that this proposed program can serve in meeting regional workforce needs. Engineering physicists typically work in high-tech industrial and manufacturing settings on teams with engineers and engineering technologists. The program will aid Clarksville, Montgomery County, and the state of Tennessee employers seeking employees with engineering education. Finally, I would like to recognize Dr. Jaime Taylor, dean of the College of Science and Mathematics, and Dr. Alex King, department chair of Physics and Astronomy. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gandy. Do we have a motion to approve the new degree program in engineering physics? Thank you, and I assume we then have a second as well. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the question on adding a new program, a degree in engineering physics is on the table. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins.
Yes.
Trustee Canata.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Luck.
Yes.
Trustee May.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee Rayburn.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Thank you. We need to now set the calendar for meeting dates for the remainder of 2017. According to the Focus Act, the board must meet four times a year. The following dates are presented after polling trustees about their availability and reviewing the campus calendar. For the summer meeting, we have May 18 and 19. For the fall meeting, we have September 14 and 15, and for the winter meeting, November 30 and December 1. I think our intention, Dr. White, was to meet the afternoon of the first day to discuss matters.
Committees.
Committees, and then the second day in the morning to actually have the board meeting. So do I have a motion to approve that calendar? And a second? So it is moved and seconded that we accept the meeting dates as presented. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins.
Yes.
Trustee Canata.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Luck.
Yes.
Trustee May.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee Rayburn.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Thank you. Chair now recognizes Dr. Lynn Crosby, assistant provost and assistant vice president for academic affairs, to present information regarding the university's accreditation substantive change process with the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. In presenting to you a summary of the university's accreditation, I will focus specifically on the substantive change process due to the governance change you're presenting today. The Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges, otherwise known as SAC COC, is the regional accrediting body for the southern, 11 southern states, and also institutions of higher education in Latin America. The mission of SAC COC is to enhance the quality of its member institutions and also to ensure and enhance the effectiveness of those institutions by applying a common set of standards across all of those institutions. To gain or maintain accreditation with SAC COC, institutions must demonstrate their compliance with the standards found in the Principles of Accreditation: Foundations for Quality Enhancement. In addition, the U.S. Department of Education requires accrediting agencies to ensure that it monitors institutions and make sure that those institutions that are receiving federal funding comply with these accreditation standards. Now I'll talk specifically about the substantive change policy. SAC COC defines substantive change as a significant modification or expansion in the role and scope and nature of an accredited institution. Certain types of substantive changes, including changes in governance, require prior approval by SAC COC as well as an onsite visit by a substantive change committee. Their role is to determine continued compliance by the institution with the principles of accreditation. These substantive change policies are guided by the U.S. Department of Education regulations. Since March of 2016, APSU has been participating in this substantive change process, as well as the five other universities undergoing this change. We are all participating simultaneously, yet each institution must submit its own unique materials to the commission for their approval. A history of the relevant correspondence and activities is found in your board notebook today. Most notably, I'd like to point out that on August 31st, President White submitted a prospectus to SAC COC regarding this change in governance. That prospectus included background information, an assessment of the need of the change, the planning that went into the change, the impact on faculty, and on financial support at the institution. In addition, we've been asked to submit more material, such as your appointments. And on March 15th, 2017, I'm pleased to say that the SAC COC Executive Council approved this proposed governance change. APSU's onsite visit for the substantive change will occur October 2nd through 5th, 2017. The final SAC COC committee composition is not yet available. However, we anticipate a four-person team as well as our assigned vice president from the commission. Board members are expected to participate in this onsite visit. However, video chat is acceptable in limited cases. During a typical visit, the SAC COC committee members will examine data from the institution and conduct interviews in order to ascertain whether the institution continues to be in compliance with the principles of accreditation. The committee offers written advice to the institution, develops a consensus on its findings, and develops a draft evaluation report. They will present an oral summary in an executive meeting at the exit on the last day of the visit to President White and other invited university officials. In preparation for this visit, we are preparing a report that is due in the middle of August 2017 to document our continued compliance with a subset of the standards. Those standards are shown in your board notebook, and they range from your governing board authority, external influence, the distinction between this board and the administration, the role of faculty in governance, and many more standards. As shown in your notebook, there are several standards related specifically to governing boards, and if you are interested, information can be provided in writing or at a future meeting to you to help you prepare for your participation in this upcoming SAC COC visit. And at this time, I'm happy to respond to any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Crosby, for that great report.
Thank you.
We're getting towards the end here, so before we conclude the business today, let me thank first the administration, the staff, for doing such a great job putting this facility together for all of us. It looks beautiful, and your group did a wonderful job in the months, really, preceding this, so thank you. I'd also like to say thank you again to Governor Haslam for your leadership, mostly, in putting this whole new program together, the Focus Act, and these boards, and thank you mostly for making the time to come to Austin Peay today and being with us. Also, want to additionally thank our legislators from the state of Tennessee who are with us today, and Joe, thank you for coming. Joe Pitts is here with us today. Better late than never. I know you were busy earlier, so thanks for being here, Joe. And thank you to everybody in the audience for attending today's first inaugural meeting. Thank you all for being here. I now move that the meeting be adjourned. Do I hear a second? Nobody wants to go. It is moved and seconded that the meeting adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the meeting is now... I guess I get to hit this?
You do.
Adjourn.
And thank you, sir.
No, thanks.
So appreciate it.